I'd like to welcome you all and I'd like to
Yep.
Order.
I have absolutely.
The September 11th, 2018 Regular Port Orchard Council Meeting. Thank you all for attending tonight. Is there a... Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any proposed amendments to our agenda tonight?
Vote to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Agenda is approved. We're to our third agenda item, citizen comments tonight. Please limit your comments to three minutes for items listed on the agenda and that are not here for a public hearing. There will be a public hearing later on tonight on the levy for the school. So when recognized, please state your name for the official record. Is there anybody that would like to give citizen comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Moving right along, we have a proclamation that I will read, remembering my own. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, 3,000 citizens of the United States of America were killed in New York City, Pennsylvania, and Washington DC as a result of unprovoked terrorist attacks. And whereas on that fateful September morning, we were reminded that the greatest strength in America is found in the hearts and souls of its citizens as we witness police officers, firefighters, rescue personnel, members of the military, and private citizens demonstrating extraordinary courage by risking their lives to save innocent victims. On this day, our country came together to provide relief and bring hope to others. And whereas despite the senseless loss of life and the horror witnessed by people around the world, we can now look at September 11th and see something more than pain. We can see strength, heroism, and unity. And whereas today and every day, we should pray for the brave men and women in uniform who are serving at home and abroad to protect their homeland and advance liberty around the world. And whereas we will never forget the victims who perished that day nor the amazing acts of selflessness. And whereas the nation remembers September 11th each year as Patriot Day and is a national day of service and remembrance, which calls upon all Americans to participate in this observance through moments of silence, the flying of the flag of the United States of half-staff, as well as activities in tribute and remembrance. And now therefore I, Scott Deener, Mayor Pro Tempore of the City of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2018, as September 11th Remembrance Day in the City of Port Orchard and encourage all citizens, businesses, and employees to join in remembering those who gave themselves on September 11th, 2001. Okay, our next agenda item is a presentation by Mr. Crocker on business license ordinance.
Good evening, council. So tonight I have a presentation on business licensing. This is a mandatory initiative by the legislature. So I really think of this as a housekeeping item that we need to take action on this month to ensure it goes into effect in a timely manner to meet their requirements. So, oh, did I go back? So, engrossed House Bill 2005 is directed to simplify the business licensing process in the state of Washington. It does two main things. Requires a one-stop shopping for businesses that are looking to license and establishes a business licensing model threshold. The one-stop-shop licensing concept requires cities to partner with the state businesses' licensing software system so that businesses can work with the state system, maybe licensed in all cities. We have within five years to be compliant with that. And the good news for the City of Port Orchard is that we are already a partner with the state in their business licensing system, so there is no action required of the city at this time. So we move on to the second mandatory requirement, that there is a business licensing model threshold established. So the Association of Washington Cities in partnership with Municipal Research Securities Board and cities throughout the state created a work group, or directed to create a work group by the legislature, and to come up with the concept of what the model, the business licensing model threshold will look like. And they did this work by July 1st of 2018. They reported back and they came back with two mandatory requirements. The business model threshold did two things, is establish a uniform definition of what it means to be engaging as a business, and establish a minimum threshold of gross revenue sales for businesses outside city limits. The definition of engaging in business that the group came up with includes examples of what constitutes business activities in the city and what does not. It's adapted from the addition, definition of engaging in businesses from BNO tax model that has already been in use by the state of Washington. Again, this is not something that we can change or opine on. It is mandatory what they're passing down to us. The model business, the model business threshold language establishes a minimum amount of gross sales that a business can do outside the city without being required to become licensed in the city. And that is set at a minimum threshold of $2,000. So if there's a business outside of Port Orchard that occasionally does business within the city at different fundraising events, and they do not have gross sales that exceed $2,000, they are not required to get business license with the City of Port Orchard. That's the intent of the law. It does require that businesses within the city still have to get business license and allows the cities to require registration with no fee for businesses that meet this threshold, so it provides an exemption for them. Here are the current deadlines. Again, the model was drafted in July, and now the work is on the cities to adopt this by October 17th in order to meet the state's Department of Revenue's requirements of a 75-day notice to change fees. So that's why I'm targeting September as the month for us to take our action, adopt our ordinance, and change our language so that we can meet October 17th deadline, so the state can then meet their January 1st deadline for 2019. So that's kind of why I laid out here for you as far as the deadlines go. And if there's any questions, I've provided the information in the packet on the ordinance and the resolution that will be for you later tonight.
Any questions at this time?
One question, and we maybe save it for later, but within that packet I didn't see a fee schedule for business licenses. Is that something that's yet to come?
No, we did not change the fees. The fee is still $35 to be licensed in the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you were talking about the businesses that maybe only occasionally do business in Port Orchard and there's a $2,000 threshold, you mentioned nonprofits. Does something like the Jingle Bell Run need a business license in Port Orchard?
I don't know if Brandy can answer that question, if the Jingle Bell, if it falls into a special exemption category.
I don't know. I have, I was just wondering, it just came to mind when you said that, when you...
If I remember reading the code correctly, I believe that they would be exempt because they do not meet that $2,000 threshold with being in the city limits. But their organization as a whole, Arthritis, I'd have to take a peek because I'm sure they do well exceed the $2,000 limit. So that's not the best answer, but we can look into it.
It was just, it just popped into my head, so I'm sorry.
It might be answered by, I'm sorry, subsection nine. But you can check that out, about, which mentions fundraising and nonprofits.
I have one question, just to make sure I'm clear. When you were speaking, it kind of confused me a little bit. If there is an outside firm that does business in the city, up to $2,000 are not required to have a business license, but when they cross the 2,000, then they would be required to have one, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
So I regret it, I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
All right, any further questions? Again, we'll get a chance to talk more about this. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to Agenda, Agenda Item Six, which is a public hearing on the South Kitsap School District Bond and Capital Projects Levy. I understand that there is a presentation by Superintendent Karzbransma. There is no one signed up to speak after that, but that doesn't mean you can't speak. There'll be plenty of opportunity for that.
Mayor Pro Temp, I need to reclose myself from this discussion.
Fair enough. Councilmember Jay Rosepep is excusing himself because he's an employee of the South Kitsap School District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, councilmembers. It's my pleasure to introduce, I have three elected school board members here today with me, President Rebecca Deal.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mayor Pro Temp, Deener, would you mind officially opening up the public hearing?
Oh, thank you. I'm new at this, folks, so thank you for that. At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing.
Officially.
Officially open the public hearing.
You can bang it. Well, I don't know that I need to hear that. I would have. Good to go.
I think we're good to go. Thank you.
My name is Karzbransma, Superintendent of Schools, South Kitsap School District. With me today are some of our elected board members. I'd like to introduce Rebecca Deal, our Board President. With her today is Director Liz Seaborn and also Director Greg Wall. I have a short presentation I'd like to, if you don't mind, share with the board to get, or the council to give them some information regarding the measure. Hopefully this will answer some of the questions that you might have in your consideration of the measure at a future board meeting. The Board by resolution has approved to place on the November ballot two measures. The program tonight that I'd like to present is just an opportunity for the district to give you some facts around those measures, to talk a little bit about the tax rate implications that we're asking our community to consider. Although as a school district, we can't tell folks whether, how to vote yes or no, but we can certainly encourage them to know the facts, get informed, and to vote. And so with that, I'd like to go through a few factual slides for you if I could. As you know, the school district has in earnest been trying to pass a capital measure to assist the district in school construction. The amount of work our school district needs, the only way we can have the authority to do that is through a, our community, our tax, our, excuse me, our voters in our school district to vote upon themselves the tax of the people for us to use in our capital projects fund. By resolution, the Board approved to place on the ballot two measures. That resolution also defines the scope of what is those funds, if approved, would be used for, and it does not give the administration or the school board authority to use those resources in any other way without further having a process. We started, as you know, a long time ago, but we have, we're one of seven school districts that have failed to measure six times in a row. And so we have been trying to figure out what it is our community will support. We have a duty not only to educate our community's most precious resource, the students in the district, we also have the duty to make sure that they are warm, that they are dry, and that they are safe. And it is our feeling that these two measures help us accomplish that as well. We started way back in March by a series of events we called SK360, a look at school facilities from every angle. We had an educational component, we had an informational component, and we had a conversational component. And it was that conversational component that we used in order to determine what it is our community could support for us to consider in placing on a November ballot. We also had a thought exchange on student safety, staff and student safety, and we also, by way of having just outstanding coverage by the Kitsap Sun, but also our local Port Orchard Independent, were able to get some additional 800 respondents from community in the Port Orchard area that help us, help the Board deliberate what it measures we felt our community needed and could support. I'll share with you just some talking points from what we learned. The district hasn't passed a bond in 30 years. The last bond was for three elementary schools. Our newest schools are Sidney Glen, Hidden Creek, and...
Olomax Ridge.
Olomax Ridge. How could I forget that? We've had seven failed bond measures since then. We receive ongoing fund for our general fund, the day-to-day operation of the district. That helps us with minimal maintenance, but it does not cover anything in deferred maintenance. The only thing that is able to do that would be a vote by the people. We don't get to decide if we get marijuana tax dollars or lottery dollars, or if whether or not property taxes should be going to the schools. That's our legislators that meet in Olympia's determination. The guidelines they gave us is that it takes a capital levy or a capital bond and a vote of the people. And so that's what we're considering today. We mentioned some of our community input. We are one of a small handful of school districts, 100% of all of our facilities qualify for what's called state match. As you know, the district, the state of Washington has a large Department of Natural Resource Forestlands. When that, when that forest land is timbered, the money gained from that is placed in a trust, and that trust is available for application by community, local community agencies, such as universities, hospitals, and all school, school districts, to make application for those trust funds. You cannot apply for those trust funds unless the community itself taxes and pays the greatest burden of that share. All of our facilities qualify for state match, and every time we go out to the voters and ask for their approval, and if we come up short, our state match dollars go to another public entity that has passed. Our enrollment in the district has grown, and our survey continues to show with all the things happening in Florida and other places, that school safety is still a paramount concern, as well as keeping up with other school districts and opportunities for our children and technology. We know that our community is sensitive to tax increases, and so one of the key elements of my presentation today is just to show you the tax rate implications. We have two ballot measures, and we're trying to use an approved tax rate that the voters approved in 2017 that will be rolled back by state statute. And if the community is, agrees with us and determines that what we're asking for would be in our community's best interest, that tax rate could be sustained over the next several years to do what we are accomplishing in these two measures, and I'll get into that. I have a series of slides that I think might be beneficial. This is our local levy, M&amp;O levy, enhancement levy, there's all kinds of names and words for it. EPO is an acronym for Educational Programs and Operations Levy. Everything on the left of the line is our previous one that has been, is expired. Measures are approved on four years. When they're expired, the voters have to re-approve the measure before it can be extended. We went out in 2017 and asked for a continuation of our EPO levy, and it was granted. It takes 50% plus one, and it was continued on for the next four years. You can see in the third bar from the right that it actually drops, that's a state rollback back, from the approved 317 down to a dollar 50. That rollback is due to the McCleary decision in which the state said to uphold our paramount duty, the state has to pay their fair share of the expenses for what they call basic education. The next slide shows you the state property tax. That's information worth noting because it's the state property tax that the state is using to pick up their share of our levy rollback. This is what it looks like. In the previous four years, it was, it was stationary in our district, at about $2.12 per thousand. It had a one-year spike this year in 2018. That year is, as you know, is halfway done, and the last collection happens in late October, early November. It spiked to 303, and then it drops to 273 in 2019, and then levels out at $3.03. Together with the increase in the state property tax and the decrease in the local levy rollback, funds McCleary's decision that says the state is trying to fully be accountable for supporting and funding basic education. This is what that looks like when the two are together. To the left, you can see we had a high of $5.80 per thousand in 2015. And then this last year, in 2018, this year currently it spiked to 620 during this transition. And you can see over the next three years, then it drops to 423. It's that drop or that leverage that we're asking our voters if they're willing to continue at the current rate that they, that we had in 2017, that we could take care of some badly needed facilities, including a new high school, a capital levy that would address safety, security, some other building maintenance, and some technology needs. So we trying to be real sensitive to our community's desire to hold the tax rates level. I will back up one slide, though, if you wouldn't mind, two slides? One more. If you look at this local levy, you can see it naturally dropping off from left to right before the rollback to a dollar 50. That has dropped for a couple of reasons. One, with the additional assessed valuation in Kitsap School District, we have more property owners paying a share of the property taxes, so everyone is paying a little less. The second thing is, is if assessment values grow, the tax rate shrinks. The district doesn't receive more money as, as property gets assessed. Voters approve the amount, the assessor determines what that amount is based on the current tax rate, tax property values. And I just share with you that back in 2017, when we ran this measure, we thought in 2018 the local tax was going to be $3.92. It has since dropped to 317 for those two reasons. More property in our district, that people are paying taxes, and as tax rate, a tax assessment went out, the tax rate dropped because the district does not receive more money, only what the voters approved. Now, fast forward. I'd like to talk a little bit about Proposition 1, which is a capital bond. The district would sell, a bond is much like a home mortgage. You sell a bond, it's tax exempt. There's some advantages to those that buy it. There's a, there's a tax incentive for them to do that. You can usually do it somewhere between 20 to 30 years. We're, the Board kind of landed right in the middle at 25 years. We know our community is sensitive, that if the, if it's too many years, you're paying less principal but a lot of interest. And if it's too small, you're paying a lot of principal and very little interest. So what we tried to do is reach a balance somewhere between $20, or 20 and 30 cents per thousand, so that we could get something that would be around 25 years. We feel that our, the project would qualify for a $9 million state assistance, that's money from the trust fund, from the timber funds. It requires a supermajority, meaning that the taxpayers have to, it has to be 60%, yes plus one vote. This is the one that's difficult, even though a majority have voted in favor of it in the past. We've been as few as 30 votes and as high as 52%. So it's, there's kind of this range, and we're thinking that with the incentive, with the leveling of the tax rate, that this may be helpful. On Proposition 1, it's for high school number two. High school number two would be built on the old Clifton Road, that's district property. This property on Old Clifton Road is in the urban growth area. It's, urban growth area is a requirement for a high school of this size to be built on. We could not build it in Alala or Burley Glenwood, where it has to be in the urban growth area, as you probably are aware, aware of. It would offer traditional programs, similar to South Kitsap High School. It would grow into a size up to 1,500, and it would serve grades nine through 12. The district currently doesn't 100% own the property, but we're in the process, it's, it's pretty much owned by the district. We have a few payments left to pay on, on that property. The majority of it was donated to us, so the district actually, from a real estate or a dollar value, did a, previous superintendents and boards did a wonderful job of capturing a, a piece of valuable property for a little investment on behalf of the school district. It's 240,000 square feet. It would have two gyms, outdoor sport fields. It would not have a lighted stadium, and it would not have a swimming pool. We have a community pool near the South Kitsap High School campus, so we have a lighted stadium there, too. It is not uncommon to have multiple high school, school districts actually share a lighted stadium. Proposition number two would be the second measure. It is a capital levy. Capital levy would be funds, again, placed in our capital fund, can only be used for the things that are identified and the voters approved. It's around three areas, safety and security, some identified capital improvements like roofs and classroom spaces, and then also items for technology for instruction. This capital levy is, it could go from one to six years. The Board decided that four years was kind of that spot where we thought our community would support. Not too far into the future, but far enough that we could do some serious planning and some serious renovation with. We do not sell the bond, there is no principal, or there's no interest to pay. It's, the money is collected by the county auditor and deposited in the district's account as it is collected. It's collected, it would be collected in eight equal payments, two payments a year. So you'd have to time your projects out, you could only do a little bit at a time as the money was collected. We're looking at total projects in the neighborhood of $24.6 million. The levy is 21.6. The state reimbursement from the trust funds is about $3 million. That $3 million would come from the remodel of the swimming pool at the, at the community pool. And you put the two together, we're trying to match expenditures with revenue to show that it, that it would be revenue neutral. If projects come in on time or under budget, the Board would have to determine two items. One, is there additional projects that we could take to the voters for their approval to use that money for? Or do we reconstitute the debt and give our voters a tax rebate, so to speak? And districts have done a variety of those. What we found, though, and what other school districts have told us, we haven't, we haven't had experience in the last 30 years, so we're, we're following the lead from the districts that have. What they're, what they're telling us is the cost of inflation is 48% per year, four to eight percent per year. That is material costs and labor costs. And so we're trying to predict a market that's very fluctuating. We built three elementary schools 30 years ago for $22 million. Our levy, the smallest one of the two, is, is 22 million. You can see we've come a long ways as far as inflation and cost of constructions since that time. The capital projects, we've identified some previous priorities that we're trying to get off, the swimming pool renovation. We were cited by the Office of Civil Rights that we have some accessibility projects, handicap accessibility and some safety issues. We have a lot of, we have almost 100 classrooms that are in modular buildings, those are trailers with wheels. We have some roof repairs and ramp repairs on those if we're to continue to use those, and this would, this would help us maintain those investments. We have a dire need to remodel our restrooms at South Kitsap High School. Two of our middle schools are without tracks for, for activities like track and also cross-country as well as physical education. And major roof replacements at Sedgwick, Sunny Slope, Marcus Whitman Middle School, as well as the district office. If you drive by those sites now, you won't see blue tarps. The blue tarps were up last week. We've replaced the, the tattered blue tarps with now attractive gray tarps. But we've got, literally, we have tarps covering our buildings, keeping our staff and our students dry. And then we have a safety and security where we're trying to provide some additional support there as well. We, at the start of the school year, South Kitsap High School now has secured front entrances. You'll be probably reading a little bit about that in upcoming media coverage. We're trying to get our middle, middle schools covered. They're the only entity in our district that does not have a secured access. Elementary and high school do. We're looking at additional security cameras at, like the transportation office and also our middle schools. We upgraded our intercom and our fire alarms at the high school, and we have nine other buildings that are in dire need to be replaced, too, as well, and this takes care of that, as well as some parking lot improvements. Technology would sustain our existing need for upgrading our, as you know, computers don't last forever. Windows 3 becomes Windows 4, and we're already up to Windows 10. There's money in not only the hardware, but also the software and the connectivity to that. We do not have interactive projectors in all of our element, middle, high school classes, but we do at our elementary classes, so our secondary classes are, are short a little bit. And then training and software purchases. We've tried to, the Board was real clear that they wanted to make sure that we maintained open and trans- open and transparency. So if you go to our website, look for the little piggy bank and the stroller, and if you click on there, you'll find a list of all the projects, and any future projects we have. And if you see where it says read more, click more, you can read more about those projects, where they're at, and also see some of the photographs of the projects in action. So if this is our existing EPO levy, this past year, 2018, it's three seventeen, it's due to rollback to one fifty. The board is looking at the difference between those two, what the voters previously approved in, in February of 2017. They didn't go as high as three sixty-eight, and they didn't go as low as three seventeen. It's kind of that fine line, it's a dollar seventy-four. The high school is about a dollar seven per thousand, that would run over twenty-five years. And sixty-seven cents per thousand for the capital project, the four-year capital levy, that would be over four years. And this is kind of what it would look like. Again, when school issues are voted on and approved, the voters approve, in that point of time, the amount, the tax rate is decided by the assessment, number of property owners in the, in the taxing district, and that what their property value is. If property values go up or down, the, usually the bill of the district remains constant because the amount has been approved. What changes is the tax, local tax rate. Not all taxing agent authorities have that, a lot of, sometimes they may approve the tax rate and not the amount, but in public schools, they approve the amount. And here are kind of some important dates. The, the board passed a resolution on July eighteenth, ballots drop on October nineteenth, and November sixth is election day, and we have pre-stamped envelopes, so no coupons to clip, no stamps to lick. Voting for South Kitsap's really slick, so. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know you have some public comment coming up, too, as well.
Are there any questions at this time?
Question I would have is on that second to last slide that you had showing, go back a little bit, yeah, this one here, would there be a value to roll this out two more years where you could see the, the capital levy go away in two years? And just to see that portion of it, that sixty-some cents?
You could a third year. We tried to match it with our dollar fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, we could, it, it actually would probably be the same over time. State statute doesn't allow you to go over a dollar fifty anymore, so the, the tax rate's fixed.
Right, but I'm just saying that the capital levy portion would come off two years later?
It would come off one year later.
Just, yeah, after one more year?
Twenty-twenty-two.
And just to show the decrease then beyond that, so they don't get confused by the four-year term versus the twenty-five-year term?
Right, correct.
Because I think it said.
Right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be reduced by a dollar seventy-four, it would probably be reduced by sixty-seven cents, or whatever the tax rate was at that time.
Correct.
For that amount of dollars.
Am I hearing correctly that we will not have the maintenance levies anymore, the four-year maintenance levies?
The, the maintenance, the EPO levy would, the district would have the opportunity to continue that if the voters renewed it. Ours becomes due or expires in 2021, and so we would have to go to the voters in 2021 in order to continue the collection in 2022.
Is that the dollar and a half?
That's the dollar and a half.
That's the dollar and a half?
Yes.
Okay, that's the piece I was missing.
That's the local levy, a dollar and a half.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
At this time, if there's anybody who would like to come and give testimony, please step forward to the mic and state your name and, and tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Hello, my name is Jeff Daley, and I'm a resident of Port Orchard. Okay, first of all, nobody is against education. Everybody is for education, we all know that, okay? The question is, does this solve the problem, okay? Okay? Come out right out front, I'm voting no. And the reason I'm voting no is this. First of all, you can't expand Port Orchard that way. You can't expand Port Orchard that way, and you can't expand Port Orchard to the south. The only way to expand Port Orchard is to the west, okay? All of that land is owned by McCormick Woods, okay? Just plain and simple, all of that land is McCormick Woods' land. Many years ago, older residents all know that that land was given to the district by McCormick Woods for this time to come, and that's fine, okay? But the problem is, the only people who are going to benefit is McCormick Woods. There are approximately fifteen hundred permits sitting over in the community development and in McCormick Woods for single-family houses the minute that this is approved. Fifteen hundred houses, assuming one kid per house, fifteen hundred kids in McCormick Woods in addition to what's already there. The, the high school is already, before it's built, too small, okay? If this is what we're thinking of doing, okay? So this isn't solving the problem, okay? Numerous times, people have been to the district, to the school board meetings and said, the campus there is huge. Those of you that are not familiar with the South Kitsap High School, behind the football field as you head towards the west, there's huge amounts of room, okay? And many times, they've proposed that solution, and that is a solution that has been discounted because we need a shiny new building, okay? So this doesn't solve the problem, okay? The McCleary thing, if anything, I think this is underfunded. Forty-seven percent pay raise for the teachers, twenty percent for classified, thirty percent for administration. We have been in a ten-year expansion of the economy. What happens when that recession comes? And you, all of you will be sitting in the same boat. When there's no money, where does it always get cut from? In the years I've been on the planet, it's always education gets hit first, okay? So all that money that we all think that we're spending so quickly may not be there, regardless what the judge says and what the legislature says. So this isn't the right solution. They have eight hundred responses out of sixteen thousand voters, okay? I came from a high school of eight thousand students. I think I came out okay. It's not the size, it's the caliber of the teachers, okay? And somewhat the administrators. I'll contain my results right there. Okay, I didn't hear anything about the district cutting costs. All of my neighbors, I have sixteen kids in our neighborhood, I have ten families, none of them attend South Kitsap High School, therefore I have ten votes against this already because they don't like South Kitsap School District, okay? And all of the things that have continually gone on to improve things have not happened. And now the district wants to build a hundred and eighty-five million dollar high school that by the time the ink is dry, fifteen hundred permits will be down and ready to build. McCormick Woods, if you haven't been out there, has already started. The signs say four hundred thousand dollar houses, go that way. So they're already starting, they can't wait any longer, okay? McCormick Woods, if you've ever been out to the golf course, if you look at the master plan, the golf course at McCormick Woods is more or less in the middle of McCormick Woods by the time they get done with the expansion. And I'm guessing you all know all this, and you're aware of the expansion plans for McCormick Woods. So why are people calling it the McCormick Woods High School? That's why. Because most folks know, that have been here a long time, that all that land belongs to McCormick Woods. If McCormick Woods wants a high school, great, build one. McCormick Woods can pay for the high school, then we can use our money to expand South Kitsap High School to something that will take care of all of the needs, not just McCormick Woods' needs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to testify? Yes, sir.
Larry Mitchell, thirty-eight, twelve Bancroft. At a hundred and eighty-four million dollars, this will make it the fifth most expensive high school in the United States. The average cost for a thousand-student high school is forty-six million dollars. So from what we see on this, there's, there's almost a hundred million dollars that we don't know where it's going to go. That's my big issue with this, is that it doesn't meet the national standards for a school at that cost.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
Hey, I'm Ryan Hader. I am a McCormick Woods resident, and I wasn't planning to speak until I just heard that. I've had the privilege of living in two communities, Manhattan, Kansas, and Golden, Colorado, both of similar sizes to Port Orchard and South Kitsap regarding students and population. And both of those cities passed bonds to build new high schools that completely changed the economies of those towns. And I lived through both of them. They're both extremely strong economies as a result, starting with education. And I'll be extremely disappointed if this doesn't go through because having seen what was before and what's happened after over ten, fifteen, twenty years, it completely changes towns. This has to happen. This is not about McCormick Woods at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Harmon, I don't have any kids, and, but I was a teacher. And one of the things that you know is schools are built where the population grows. If you go to North Kitsap, you go to Silverdale, the new schools is where the new housing brings in the mass of new students so that they're more walkable and not spending on busing. So that's one thing. My dad went to South Kitsap and graduated in nineteen thirty-three. That school has been around a long time, and you may have built around it, but there's a lot of old in that school. And we need to get a new high school. We need more new schools that aren't leaking, that have the technology. And if you want to, I personally don't want to see Port Orchard become a big city. I'm, let's keep it small. But I do believe that you bring more people in when you have good schools. And I, I just can't understand why somebody would be proud of thirty years of not passing a bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm the other Jerry in Port Orchard, nice to finally meet you, Ms. Harmon. My name's Jerry Austin. Thank you back. My name's Jerry Austin, I'm the vice president of South Kitsap School Supporters. Unlike the school district, I can encourage you to vote a certain way. I thank you guys for your past endorsement of these measures, that support means a lot in this town. And I encourage you to support both the measures again today and give us your endorsement here tonight. As previous people have said, it's been thirty years since we've passed capital funding in this district, which makes us the largest high school in the state. By a long shot, commencement speaker last year at graduation said, hey, guys, at least we're number one at something, even if it's not passing bonds. And that was upsetting for, for me to hear students feel that letdown by our community. So I want to talk a little bit about why we have the largest high school in the state, because there's a lot of prevailing narratives out there, that the district did this intentionally, that we put the high, ninth graders into the high school to create a crisis so that we could finally pass a bond. I served on the most recent boundary review committee, and I got to tell you guys, it's just not true. Looking at the elementary schools this last fall, we are at capacity in all of our elementary schools. And the previous boundary review committee was faced with a really tough decision. We're out of space in this district. So which students are you going to prioritize? That committee rightly chose to protect the most vulnerable students, our youngest students, to make sure that they had the safest facilities that we could provide. That's why the ninth graders got moved up. It's not a grand conspiracy, it's just reality. It's the reality of being thirty years without passing a bond. Another thing that we hear a lot is that enrollment has declined, or that we haven't met the projections. Well, there's a reason for that, too, as the previous gentleman alluded to. He's got ten high school students on his road, none of them go to South. We have students all over our district who don't go there because it's so crowded and the situation is so stressful. Personally, I know two families who I went to preschool with, I'm sorry, not I went to preschool with, my children went to preschool with out of South Colby, who have moved this summer. And they've cited this as a reason why. Their children are approaching middle school, they're entering sixth grade this year, they want to settle into a district where they know that their kids can have full opportunities in high school, that they can have the opportunities for extracurricular sports, that they can live in a school which isn't so crowded that we have to come up with all these creative solutions, which the district has done quite well. I mean, it's amazing to me that the students in this school and the district have been able to make work with what we have, but we can do better than this. Thirty years ago, people thought that if we stopped building schools in this district, growth would stop. It didn't. It didn't stop. If we stop building schools, growth will continue to happen. The McCormicks, they want to develop their property, they want to sell homes, people are going to buy those homes, people are moving here, people have been moving here for the last couple of decades. We're living in a fantasy world, thinking that if we just don't build another high school, growth will suddenly stop, and Port Orchard will stay the same size it is. It won't, it's reality. And I've also heard a lot of comments about taxes, and why do we have this, and what about pot taxes and all of that. We shouldn't be punishing our students as a protest to the way that government works, the way that the federal government funds education, and the way that the state government funds education. This is a local responsibility, this is something that we can solve locally. We shouldn't be looking to other people to solve the problems that we can solve ourselves. Lastly, I want to finish on the issue of trust, because I've heard a lot of people say that we can't trust the district. I'm truly stunned, and I've dug a lot, on where do these ideas come from? A lot of it is rooted firmly in misinformation. In the last year, while I've been advocating for this measure, I've seen firsthand how the district has lit, listened, and the board members behind me know that I've taken them to task when I don't feel like they're, they're, they're listening adequately. In the past, we lumped all of these measures together on one measure, one big bond where we put improvements together. They've broken this measure out into two. We now have a capital levy being proposed and a bond. They heard concerns about the, the measure two years ago with the STEM high school being out, built out there, the boutique high school is what we heard. They listened to that. This is a comprehensive high school, just like South Kitsap High School. It's not different, it's just a high school. And lastly, they heard complaints about special elections, and the cost around special elections, and is that a judicious use of our tax dollars? That's why it's on the November ballot this time. We got to put it in front of as many voters as we can, and we have to continue to do this as affordably as we can. So I would like, like you all to endorse these measures and give us your endorsement. And lastly, my students, my, my, my son's in sixth grade this year, my daughter's in fourth grade, they won't be attending the new high school, they're going to be going to the old high school. I'm still here tonight asking for your endorsement because we all benefit from this. We are a school district, we are a large community that doesn't stop at the city limits. We all benefit from these measures. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
Hi, I'm Greg Wall, and I live in McCormick Woods, which is part of Port Orchard. Just to set the record straight, the cost of our high school is comparable, perhaps a little bit less than surrounding high schools. Central's building high schools or building schools, ours are coming in about their same amount. They are surprisingly expensive, but that's the cost of what schools cost. This is not a basic high school, but a comprehensive high school. Second issue that Jerry talked about a little bit is, we did realign the district two years ago, and we made this a four-year high school. There were two school districts out of two-hundred-and-ninety-five in the state of Washington that had three-year high schools, us in Federal Way, or, excuse me, us in Pualup. The reason we moved the kids were twofold. One was because we needed room for the all-day kindergarten, and so we moved the sixth graders up to middle school, but that's only part of the reason. The real reason and the major reason was because educationally, the best thing for our students is to have a four-year high school, where the ninth graders are part of, part of the high school experience, can get the electives they need, and can get the programs they need. And so that's why we moved people up. We also have a middle school system now instead of a junior high system. Only one other district in the state has a junior high system. It's in about thirty years out of date. The middle school system works the best for our students, and that's why we moved the kids up. We weren't trying to create a crisis, we weren't trying to create growth, the growth is coming. The other thing I wanted to set straight is, I don't know where people get the idea that McCormick Woods owns the whole west side of Port Orchard. McCormick Woods, which is actually called Gem Corporation now, does own, or did own part of McCormick Woods, most of it's been bought out by a couple Most of it's been bought out by a couple of developers, I think. But if the north side of Cliff, Old Clifton Road is where most of the growth is. And that is not owned by McCormick Woods or by Gem. It's, for instance, the Ridge is owned by Quantum, which is a company maybe some people have heard of, it's called Warehouser. Uh, they, it's, that's where the growth is. Our school district and our county is growing and Port Orchard's part of that. And I would expect eventually Port Orchard's going to expand its boundaries, will get more people in, in the city itself. Uh, but the school district is, our population is growing by leaps and bounds. Uh, our population, uh, our school district population will go up. It's about ninety, almost just under ninety-eight-hundred kids now. It will go up probably a hundred kids over that by the time the school year progresses. So we're creeping up on ten thousand kids. The other issue that, you know, we have had more kids in this school district, but we have much larger class sizes. The legislature has mandated smaller class sizes, which we've complied with and we, our unions have negotiated smaller class sizes and that's better for the kids, too. Uh, and, uh, we all have all-day kindergarten now, which effectively doubles the number of kindergarten classes we need. And kindergarten, the goal for kindergarten, our size is now about nineteen kids in each kindergarten class. Uh, I went to an open house, uh, last week at Sunny Slope. Sunny Slope has about one-hundred-and-forty kids, a hundred and two of them are kindergartners and they're still coming. That's where our growth is and that's why we need to make room at the top. Finally, this is a comprehensive high school, which will draw from all over the district. We'll be drawing up the boundaries that make it an equitable place to go. A lot of people will want to go to South because that's where their family went and that's where they've always gone. And there's a lot of pride and just so no one misunderstands, South Kitsap High School is a great high school. My three kids went there. They've all done well. Uh, it is one of the few international baccalaureate high schools in the state of Washington. Football team's not doing so good right now, but they will. Uh, and it is one of the best CTE schools in the state, but it is last remodeled in nineteen seventy-eight. And the capital levy in particular, we need, we have put a lot of money into, you know, tech upgrades, safety upgrades, but there's an awful lot to be done. We have ten elementary schools that, uh, really, really need some upgrades in technology and in safety and security, parking, things that will benefit the students directly. And that's why we're asking for the endorsement from the, the city council and that is why the board decided that this was the time to do this. It's been kind of tough. It was pretty hard to lose by thirty-four votes, but you know, our needs haven't changed. They've gotten worse or increased and we need these schools and that's why we're asking for the money and that's why we're asking for the city council's endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Going once, twice, three times, okay. We will close the public hearing. Thank you very much for attending tonight. I know this is an important issue to many people. Moving, moving on to our, yes.
Can we just let the audience know that, um, the endorsement is not on tonight's agenda? I believe it's going to be on our September twenty-fifth's agenda.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Wasn't sure about the schedule for that, so you don't want to say.
So what I'm saying is if you don't want to sit for, through the rest of our riveting meeting, um, it's, it's okay to leave.
Sit down, Derek.
It's more exciting when I run it. Okay. Uh, well, let's move on to business item seven A, an adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code five-point-one-two business licenses. Mr. Crocker.
Oh, thanks, we should, yeah. No.
Did you, did you?
We got two.
No. Sorry.
I wondered, do you know?
No, I went through all the, you know, applications for.
Who, who? I know. It's actually worthwhile.
No.
Yeah.
Counsel, are we?
Yes, with that.
Right back. Hello? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll speak a little louder.
Yes.
Tonight. Um, I have a fairly long staff report, but the staff report, uh, primarily summarizes the presentation we went for, uh, earlier. So I'm going to keep my comments brief for, in the staff report, um, with the details to follow. Again, engrossed House Bill two thousand and five, adopted by the legislature in twenty-seventeen, required cities and towns with business regulations to establish a work group that would create the business model license and minimum threshold and a definition for engaging in business, uh, by July twenty-eighteen. The city business license work group has been meeting since August of twenty-seventeen last year and have come up with the recommendations to forward as mandatory requirements. The final model business license ordinance has been released. So let me back up. The work group actually developed the model business ordinance language and has been pushing that to cities as their adoption. So, uh, we have simply accepted their language and said, yes, we will incorporate this into our code and propose this for adoption by the city council. So all the language is actually already created for us, vetted for us and, uh, asked of us to adopt. Uh, the current business licensing partner cities must adopt the language by October seventeen, twenty-eighteen and provide notification to the business licensing services in order to maintain its business licensing program on January first, twenty-nineteen. So again, it says mandatory, we're accepting, uh, their documentation and if a city does not meet the deadlines, then they cannot, they can no longer continue to, uh, collect business licensing. Uh, the statute requires that the notice be received seventy-five days prior to the effective date of all these changes and that is why we were talking about this in September, uh, rather than closer to the end of the year. Again, any city or town that does not adopt the model ordinance by the deadline is prohibited from enforcing its general business licensing requirements until it adopts the model's ordinance provisions. As a staff, I'd recommend that we, uh, approve the ordinance as provided and I would look to the council to opine.
I would move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code five dot one-two as presented.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chang.
Yeah, Noah, can you tell us a little more about the work group? Was it all staff or what was the compri, the composition of that? I got a little handout here that both WFWA, so there's multiple organizations across the state that are working on this. I mentioned AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, WFWA, the Washington Finance Officers Association, and MRC have been working, uh, uh, proactively with all cities to, A, get the language out there so they know what it says as far as defining businesses and understand the minimum threshold that they're adopting in their ordinances. And, uh, so that work group between WFWA, AWC, MRC, and the cities, uh, was the legislative makeup. I don't have exact examples. Uh, if you like, I can look into that further to identify who was on the work group. I'm sure somewhere in the bill language, they have identified everyone that participated in those groups. I didn't know if it was just local business people or, or the more. Yes, there were, yes, the business community was definitely involved in, uh, debating and establishing what that minimum threshold. So it wasn't just cities involved in this work group. It was businesses and the cities and the state listened to what the business community says as far as what the minimum threshold should be. Um, and so there was some give and take there and that's what they arrived on is the two-thousand dollars.
Right, but this was a statewide work group, not something just here local in Port Orchard.
Correct. Correct.
Any other discussion?
Um, I'm sorry, do you have, can you clarify which we are selecting for businesses under the two thousand? Are we going, are we exempting them from licensing or are we requiring licensing with no fees? That's the part that I wasn't clear on. Yeah, so the way the ordinance is drafted is that if you are a business outside of the city of Port Orchard, but occasionally do business in the city of Port Orchard, um, but do not exceed gross sales of two thousand dollars, you are exempt from having a business license in the city of Port Orchard and paying the business licensing fee here. You will still be required to register with the state and have a business license with the state, um, but that's really what the exemption is doing. And we do have not a large number, but there are occasional businesses, again, for events that, um, come and, uh, put up a popcorn stand or something that have really low volume of sales and sometimes it's nonprofits where they're donating to the organization. In the past, we've required them to get a business license. And some of them would say, well, we actually don't make any money when we come into the city to do business. Uh, we're here to support an event and they seek other exemptions through our code. Um, so this is a statewide issue and some felt that establishing a minimum threshold of actually business activity in the city would help to address administrative work as well as, uh, be more supportive of the business community.
Yes.
Just for information and a bit of history, why the city of Port Orchard created the business license to begin with was not to collect thirty-five dollars a year from the businesses, but it was more to be able to make sure that the businesses are reporting their sales tax that they collect correctly so that the city would get its fair share of any sales tax that's collected in the city. That was the original intent and to my knowledge, um, that's why we still have business licenses and we're only charging thirty-five bucks a year. Thirty-five dollars is really to cover the administrative costs of issuing the license and the time to make sure that, once again, they are just reporting their sales tax correctly.
Yeah, and if I may add, um, what came out of this work group is, at least what I learned is that, uh, the, the average business license across the state is about fifty dollars. So ours is thirty-five, ours is well below the average across other cities. So that may be something we want to look at in the future. I didn't want to do that as part of this work because again, this is something we need to, uh, do to address the state's timeline issues. And so we haven't addressed the fee. We're, uh, accepting the language establishing a minimum, uh, gross sales threshold to be required to get a business license.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion for adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code five-point-one-two business licenses. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Next agenda item seven B is adoption of a resolution establishing a business license minimum threshold exemption. Mr. Noah Crocker again.
Thank you, Mayor Protempore. So the next one is a resolution. Again, we adopted our original business licensing fee by resolution and we have language associated with that resolution that needs to be updated. So this resolution will repeal the prior one, uh, add in the new required language and reestablish the fee level. So, per engrossed House Bill two thousand and five, again, the state adopted this language and requirements for the model business license ordinance, uh, to be adopted. The city is required to repeal the currently established business licensing fee resolution number zero-zero-four-dash-eleven and replace it with a new resolution incorporating the necessary language changes to establish a minimum threshold for exemptions. Staff would recommend approving the resolutions as provided.
Mr. Chang.
I move to adopt a resolution establishing a minimum threshold exemption.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
We're on to business item seven C, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter ten-point-one-two, parking, standing, and stopping. Mr. Mark Dorsey.
Thank you, honor, council members. As a housekeeping measure and in working with the parking enforcement staff and to support proposed modifications to the city's, whoops, strike that, we just did that a while ago. The city's Public Works Department continues to annually inventory existing signage to compile corrections, revisions, and/or modifications to the current Port Orchard Municipal Code, POMC, uh, Chapter ten-point-twelve. Uh, this particular change is really just about Seattle Avenue, just off of Bay Street. There was kind of a revision to a house and how they access the property and we had no parking signs that were creating issues. And so, for the most part, we try to bring these annually or semi-annually. I think this is the fourth time we've been to council this year. Unfortunately, well, this used to be non-codified, so it's a bit more problematic when we have something that comes up and we have to go through this process. So, um, again, there's a lot of words in here that weren't changed if you look at the red line version, but it's, it's mainly the Seattle Avenue issue. So with that, staff recommends adoption of an ordinance thereby updating POMC Chapter ten-point-one-two-point-five-zero-zero and ten-point-one-two-point-five-six-zero-zero regarding parking, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city.
We have a motion.
I move to adopt an ordinance thereby updating POMC Chapter ten-point-one-two-point-five-zero-zero and ten-point-one-two-point-five-six-zero regarding parking, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city with final form approved by the city attorney.
We have a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
How many of any parking spots or potential parking spots are affected? Are we removing where people used to park or?
We're removing where there would, there, I think there were two parking spaces on Seattle, but with the revision to the access to the driveway, those aren't there right now anyway. And all, what was happening was people were parking.
Blocking the driveway?
On the property and either blocking or actually parking on the property to avoid the, the timing limit. So it was just an unintended consequence of the driveway revision and so it's really a non-issue from a global citywide perspective.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second for adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter ten-point-one-two, parking, standing, and stopping. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Business item seven D is adoption of a resolution authorizing code enforcement officer and city attorney to initiate a lawsuit for warrant of abatement for ten-thirteen Morton Street. Mrs. Kates.
Thank you, Mayor Protempore and city council members. The city of Port Orchard has been pursuing an abatement of ten-thirteen Morton Street under the provisions of Chapter thirty-five eighty RCW, as adopted by Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section twenty-two-twelve. The current owners purchased the property located at ten-thirteen Morton Street in October of twenty, of two thousand and five. The two buildings, a one-and-a-half-story vacant, one-and-a-half-story house with daylight basement and a two-story garage storage building, both built in nineteen twelve, have been vacant, dilapidated, and uninhabitable since at least April two thousand and seven. And the front retaining wall is broken, bulging, and in danger of failure. Since two thousand and seven, the city has received repeated complaints about the buildings and property and had to make multiple contacts with the owners related to unsecured buildings, unpermitted work, uncontrolled vegetation, and property maintenance issues. In February two thousand and eight, city staff found work being done in the building without permits and stopped the work. Since that time, there have been no permit applications, no further work has been done, with the exception of the removal of a ramp between the two buildings. And the buildings and structures have continued to deteriorate with no apparent maintenance done to preserve the buildings or structures. On September twelfth, twenty-seventeen, code enforcement officer Doug Price inspected the buildings on the property from the exterior only and found multiple violations of Section twenty-two-twelve, POMC. Due to damage, dilapidation, and improper and unpermitted construction and modification, the buildings and structures on the property are dangerous or unfit for human habitation or other uses as defined by POMC twenty-two-twelve-zero-four-zero. On November seventh, twenty-seventeen, the city issued a complaint and notice of hearing stating in what respects the property is dangerous or unfit and accomplished proper service on the, of the complaint and notice. The owners of the property never responded to the complaint and notice, but did appear at the hearing on November twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen, before the city's Community Development Director. The owners did not, however, propose any plan to address the city's complaint. The city filed its findings in order on November twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, and accomplished proper service of the findings in order. The owners of the property have filed no appeal of the notice of order and to date, the dangerous buildings and structures have not been abated. The next step to secure compliance with the city's notice and order is to obtain a warrant of abatement from the Kitsap, Kitsap County Superior Court and authorization to initiate lawsuits on behalf of the city must be obtained from this Port Orchard City Council. So the recommendation of staff is to provide authorization to the code enforcement officer and city attorney to move forward with a lawsuit to seek a warrant of abatement.
Mr. Dawson.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the Port Orchard Code enforcement officer and city attorney to undertake such action as necessary and appropriate to initiate and pursue a lawsuit for a warrant of abatement for the owners of ten-thirteen Morton Street on behalf of the city of Port Orchard as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Roosevelt. Okay, is there any discussion? Mr. Chang.
Well, I'm, I'm very happy that we're doing something about this because we have heard about it for years. And do you happen to have any background of why the people met with the director of Department of Community Development and didn't propose any changes? Do they live out of the area or?
That, I, I believe that is the case. I believe that they do live out of the area, though I couldn't swear to that. But, um, yeah, I believe that they have intended to make, make changes and, and perhaps just have not had the, the funds to do so.
Over fifteen years?
Sounds like they've walked away. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion for adoption of a resolution authorizing code enforcement officer and city attorney to initiate a lawsuit for warrant of abatement at ten thirteen Morton Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to item seven E, approval of change order number seven to contract number oh-three-seven dash seventeen with active construction incorporated for the Tremont Street widening project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, honor, council members. Before I read the summary, you'll note that the summary is much shorter than the previous summaries that were getting longer and longer because from a historical perspective, I was wanting to say, you know, council approved this changer, this changer, it just got too cumbersome. So I've just changed the format, and I'll be continuing with this format moving forward. So, on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract oh-three-seven-one-seven with active construction for the Tremont Street widening project. Current change order approvals by council to date total six-seven-seventy-three thousand, four dollars and eighty-seven cents, with change orders number two and three amendments still pending. It's my hope that change order two and three, two A and three A, will be on the twenty-fifth agenda. If not, they'll be on the first meeting in November. At this point, it looks like those two are going to cancel each other out. The savings that we're going to see in change order two, it will just pay for the increase that the, that we received the gift from the WashDOT, where they wanted the, they wanted additional improvements for the lights at the interchange. So I think those are going to cancel each other out. Tonight's action is for the change order approval of the change in condition de-watering for the SR sixteen interchange at Tremont Street as needed for the installation of the thirty-inch storm drainage outfall at Ross Creek. As mentioned, for the change order approval process between the contractor, the city's CACM team, and washed-out highways and local programs will not incur in time for this regular meeting and cannot wait. Therefore, the city's Public Works Department is requesting authorization for the mayor or the mayor tempore to execute change order number seven in an amount of one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents with active construction at this time. In the generals, in general summary, the current value of all change orders to date total seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and sixty-five cents, which is seventy-eight point eight percent of the current contingency amount. So we're still within our contingency. And we're back to work, and they're curving tomorrow, and we're still hoping, mother nature dependent, that we'll get the base paving complete, then all the way up to pottery. They may not do the roundabout, but that'll at least allow those businesses and homes to be driving on some asphalt this winter. If the weather holds, we're hoping they can get the roundabout open and we can get all the way to Port Orchard Boulevard. But the strike did not help, because we were pushing a window that we lost two weeks on, a very important window, so. But they're back working, and whether we do this thirty-inch pipe this year or we do it in April or May, it's just going to really depend on weather. But having this approval gives us the flexibility to hit a window. That window could be in February. You know, we could get one of those two weeks of twenty-seven degrees and no precipitation, and that we're just going to go hit it, get the de-watering going and do it. So this is an important approval. So with that, staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order number seven with active construction in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-fourteen, eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand and seventy-eight cents, added to the current contract amount.
Councilmember Clausen.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number seven with active construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents, added to the current contract amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Number Roosevelt, any discussion?
No, I just, I just had a question, and I think I, I think I know the answer, but the, the union action that just took place in the settlement, that should not affect the cost of our Tremont project.
It didn't, it has not yet directly had a cost impact because the days in which they weren't working were suspension days, so there was no immediate financial implication. The potential for the two weeks getting it behind on a weather delay could have implications on increased cost for erosion control, for example. We don't get that paving down, we're going to be spending more money now on managing the wetness. The other issue is, because the state was shut down or Western Washington was shut down, pavers are now backlogged, and so I can't tell you that the previous subconsultants, they're going to honor their price because now they've got three projects to choose from. So I can't answer your question definitively. There may. My hope is that the strike was short enough that the paving companies and the paving plants can get ramped up, and we're not going to have a change, we're not going to have them change the price per ton on asphalt. But I can't tell you that right now. I'm not hearing that that's occurred yet, but I do know that there was a, I think I said, if you read the articles, you know, the, the timing of the strike was pretty good when you had, most of the state, they were all trying to pave, to get paved out for the winter. And I think that's probably the biggest unknown right now is, will per-tonnage costs change?
I was thinking, probably, which would have been a more insignificant amount than the change in the cost of asphalt. But I was thinking to meet time schedules and perhaps weather, if they would be working overtime and if we would, you know, if that would increase our cost. But basically, we have a contract that says, with active construction, that says, they're going to do this work for this amount of money. And what would alter that are the change orders that we've had where something has come up that is different than we anticipated, and we had to do it differently than they had bid.
Right. So, I mean, that's ultimately at the base of where we're at. Looking forward, again, the time we've added to the contract, either with change orders issued or the suspension, have been non-valued, non-compensatory working days. So we haven't incurred a direct cost with those. We do know that, at this point, that instead of the project being completed in April of two thousand and nineteen, I would say it's more realistic because now we're pushed into when we can pave the final wearing course, that we're now into that kind of window, is, you know, we're probably looking at June or July before the road, before the project's completely done, when it's going to be open to the traveling public, just waiting for that final list of asphalt, maybe March or April. So the traveling public, if you drove through Balfour for the year that you, you didn't realize that you were driving two inches lower, everything just operates, and then suddenly you were two inches higher. So, you know, that's probably what's going to happen as far as like managing expectation of the public. Landscaping will be in, lighting sidewalks, you're just going to have temporary stripes put on the ground. And then we're looking at potentially closing the road actually for a two-day period and being very public about when that's going to happen because we don't want to pave those roundabouts in sections so that you have these joints, and the only way to do that is to have two pavers and to actually close the road. I think we'll want to talk about that later, but that's what I would propose, whether we do that night work, weekend work, or we just say for a day and a half, Tremont's closed, so that we get a best product on the final, because that's going to get that road down forty years till I'm dust in the wind. And we won't have, we won't be worrying about irregular seams because of how they had to pave half and then let it cool and switch traffic over and that whole thing. So I think that's ultimately what's going to happen, is the traveling public will think that we're done when we still have the final paving to pave, and that probably won't happen until, you know, May, June.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Just a question and an editorial comment, and maybe I'll flip it and say the editorial comment first, as one that drives it every day. That roundabout is going to be fantastic. It's amazing how much traffic moves through it already in a detoured situation and moves smoothly.
Right.
The question I have is beans that it is now two inches lower than what it will eventually be. How do you deal with catch basins and things for stormwater when it's two inches lower than the catch basin?
Well, change order six, I believe, in finishing that ditch work. So yes, you, you have water that's bypassing the system, but that's not a bad thing because last winter, we had this same situation where we didn't have the vaults in yet. And so the change order to do that final ditch work, because this thirty-inch pipe isn't in yet, is, we'll be managing the water down to where it's been going naturally. I don't know, if we have a heavy winter this year, I mean, the Harrison Pond, and I designed it, and I've seen it overflow twice, and it went over the road, and the on-ramp had water over it, and we put a water-over- roadway sign. It doesn't get more than six inches. I would say if we have a heavy winter, there's a good chance that we may have water over the roadway on that on-ramp to sixteen. It doesn't mean that we're going to close the on-ramp, but it also means that the road isn't going to be traveled. It just means the water isn't going to be going into that vault, but.
So in essence, the stormwater system isn't quite complete yet, and not dumping water into it is probably going to be a good thing.
It's going to, yeah, we're going to be just, it's going to be a non-change in condition from where we're at now. Because we had impervious surface lasher.
Right.
We've got some more, but it's, in the grand scheme of things, you're not going to feel much of a difference.
More curiosity, maybe. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion for approval of change order number seven to contract number thirty-seven dash seventeen with active construction incorporated for the Tremont Street widening project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to business item seven F, approval of change order number three to contract number twenty-three dash eighteen with Neptune Marine LLC for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment number three construction. Mr. Dorsey.
Okay, thank you, honor, council members. This is a little more difficult issue. On April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract oh-two-three dash one-eight, C oh-two-three dash one-eight with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents for the two thousand and eighteen Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Three construction project. On June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, the Public Works Director approved change order number one in the amount of seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents in association with the revised measurement and payment methodology for the placement of the concrete retaining walls. And on July eleventh, Public Works Director also approved change order two in an amount of thirteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and eighty cents in association with the revised measurement and payment methodology for the excavation-removal haul and disposal of excessive concrete rubble shoreline riprap encountered. Both change orders were executed within the established administrative limits of our change order policy. Change order number three provides for a complete and agreed-upon recapitulation of the project's schedule of values, overages, and underages for the completed work, as well as providing the cost differential associated with the cable fence versus the chain-link fence, the electroconduit handholds and cables omitted from the plan's specifications, and the substantial cost overruns associated with the previously approved change order number two, which we had limited that to a thirteen-thousand-dollar limit with change order two. Please note, city staff was not made aware of the substantial cost overrun associated with change order number two until last week, but I think this is actually two weeks now because of the stoppage, whereby a limited work stoppage was ordered until the recapitulation was complete and verified, and change order three could be prepared. And I want to note, if you go to change order number three, in the contract history, those numbers are all correct. If you look up in that little box that says this change order authorizes additional work, it says not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and forty cents. That's actually not right. The correct number is the ninety-eight, ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents. So it's just on that page, there was a scribbler's error. The actual contract history has the right numbers, and the four ninety-five, one forty, forty-one is the correct total contract amount. So therefore, staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order number three with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents, bringing the total project change order amount to one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for the Bay Street two thousand and eighteen pedestrian pathway segment three construction. And so that basically is a thirty-five percent contract overage, which is fairly substantial. I guess one way you could look at that is the project was always a four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollar project. We just thought it was a three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollar project.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number three with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents for the two thousand and eighteen Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Three construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Roosevelt. Any discussion?
Question. Finance Director, do you have an idea of source of funds?
Yeah, yeah. We have been talking, we've been tracking all these capital projects, all these change orders, and ensuring that we have sources of funding. So for this particular change order, we're going to be relying upon the recreation, the recration, recreational reserve.
Recreation.
What am I saying? Yeah, recreational reserve fund. In there, we have currently roughly two-hundred thousand dollars, so one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars is going towards this project to make this project whole. So currently, we're projecting that we have the sources of funding at the current project cost with these adjusted change orders. So yes, we are carefully monitoring these projects as each change order comes in and identifying the source of funding. And I think this will become more apparent as we get into the budget work, and we, you'll hear an interesting message from me is that we've been exhausting all our available resources, all our different funds, to keep these current capital projects in parks, streets, sewer, water, whole, and gain to completion. So I'm excited to see some of these projects complete, and so we can really have a good moment to assess where we're at going forward in the future.
Any further discussion? Yes.
No, I would just make the comment, because what I'm remembering when we originally made, approved a change order, and then that became a bigger amount than we thought. It's my understanding that this is the materials and for the, do I want to say bulkhead, the rock work that was done?
Right. The key thing was, I mean, there was the, there was the fencing change that was my air. I didn't catch that. I don't know why the railing was chain, chain link. I didn't catch it in the plan review process. That was about a nineteen thousand dollar add. We had the conduit, the actual conduit and the wire and the handholds, which was another twenty-seven thousand. That, there was a discrepancy between the plans and the specs. But those were manageable. Those were within the thirty thousand dollars over the project budget. The relief you came in the concrete rubble where, what, we had to haul out because that section, when we did West Bay Center, for example, we didn't have to haul out very much concrete rubble. It was further down. I think this particular area between the Marley and Bay Ford was when some old high school was torn down or something, and they, that whole thing is just littered with this concrete rubble. So the amount of rubble that came out had to be replaced with something, and that's ultimately to build then the retaining wall on it. The good news is, when you go, you know, Neptune is also doing the McCormick Park. They're doing a fantastic job. The end product is going to be something we can be proud of, and it's going to stand the test of time. But they need to get paid for their work, and the amount of rubble that came out and the amount of inch and a quarter that came in to fill those voids and to build the wall was a substantial number. My issue has always been not necessarily the cost of work as much as it was the
My issue has always been not necessarily the cost of work as much as it was the timing of when we were told that I would have rather come to you in June and said, hey, by the way, we're going to go over this thirteen thousand dollars because there's a lot more of this stuff. And that's an issue that I'm currently working through with our, with the contractor and the CACM team. But at the end of the day, this would have, knowing that wouldn't have cha- we would have been here anyway.
Anyway, but having this experience, that will be educational and informative for us when we finish the rest of this path out to Annapolis. We shouldn't have a surprise like this when we finish it.
Right, absolutely.
As, as we, as we complete the, the pathway.
Yeah, we, the plans we have right now are at a ninety percent. We're gonna, we're gonna have those plans at some point in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. I'm working with the Department of Transportation now on the connecting Washington funds. We're going to go through a re- not a redesign, but a detailed final design and, you know, we'll look at geotechnical and, you know, hopefully that stretch, once you get past West Bay Center, really wasn't filled like this area was. But yeah, we're gonna go through with a fine tooth comb and, and try to uncover as much and learn from this, make sure that, and we're, and the same thing with Tremont, making sure that the plans and specs match the schedule of values and that unit prices, or not even the unit prices, but bid items that are in there are used and not just in there and that quantities are actually correct. So that's, we're running into that on Tremont as well. So, you know, the devil's in the detail and, uh, we want to just make sure that what is bid is what is our final number with, other than change in conditions. Having unit pri- changes in conditions, that's what our contingencies are for. Unit price bus, that's a whole different issue. So, yeah.
Any further discussion?
No, I would just say that I'm gonna s- it, it's a large change order amount, but I'm going to support that because I believe the final product is, um, more important. And we can figure out, even if we have to alter some of our other plans, um, but we need to finish this path and we need to do it correctly.
And we also have the, the park, which we have to have that money spent by June of two thousand and nineteen, so we've got to get this project done. We made some adjustments to this to accommodate the other. Um, so that project should go much smoother because some of this rubble and things that we found in the, the work zone was actually, would have come up in the park project. So I'm hoping that the Rockwell Packer Park will be, uh, very simple. Uh, we just have to get through the hearing and just get that out to bid.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clausen had his.
Well, I was just gonna comment similarly to, uh, Beck's comments in the sense that the process of how we got to here was a little bit troubling, but the fact is, to make a good project, we would have to deal with this either today or a couple of months ago when we first, or should have been aware of it. But the fact is, I'm sure we would have still made the same decision. And I agree wholeheartedly that when we're finished with this, this is something that's gonna, I like your comment about, uh, the test of time, uh, and also the fact that this is something that the community's going to be very proud of and use it extensively, so.
Yeah, we got, we can't get people to not use it now.
Right.
Yeah.
Even though we have closed sidewalk signs up that continue to.
That's an invitation.
Move the signs out of the way and.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Councilmember Chang, did you have something?
Do you, do we know how old that rubble was? Is it from the fifties or seventies?
Fifties.
I mean, we heard about the fill of Bay Street. Do you think it was part of that?
I think Councilman Clausen probably has a better sense because he was probably out there with a wheelbarrow.
Back in the dinosaur days.
I, I think it was in the fifties, there was some old brick factory or something that got torn down and.
Yeah, there was a, a brick factory and actually, a long time ago, there's pictures out here of it being a brewery, but I'm not sure if that was from that, that particular period of time.
Yeah, I would say it, there wasn't a brick factory there in the fifties.
No, that was.
No, it was before that, but still.
The, the fill though, it was for the old, was it the, uh, the original store, the Safeway or whatever, the TB and M or?
Oh, you're talking down there.
I'm talking about.
Yeah, TB and M.
The coast to coast that's now gone.
Yeah.
Right.
The coast to coast and then there was a store there and it was a.
Yeah, TB and M.
Well, there was, the, the store, the TB and M was what was just torn down by the Ford, uh, folks, but there used to be an auto parts store, deals auto parts store there. There was a, uh, a shell gas station, uh, that was there and a house.
How Ford, How Ford was there.
It was kind of behind the tube, but who knows where the rubble came from? I don't know that there was much done on the waterfront when that stuff was removed when the hotel was built, so.
Right, yeah. The original fill though, I think was in the fifties when they, you know, moved out into the.
Fit very well, Bill. The only fill I remember is some of that behind Bay Street and West Bay.
Yeah, it, it's, yeah, it's old fill. I would say forties, fifties.
So, believe it or not, it was before me.
Older than all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I, I've got one last question. When are we targeting an opening of that segment?
We're still hoping to get moving first thing tomorrow morning. Um, and again, it's this whole paving backlog issue. Uh, we were hoping to be paved before Labor Day weekend. Uh, we're hoping for the end of the month, so I would say October. Um, because we need, we need to close the project out for a lot of reasons. So Neptune Marine just wants to get in and get it done. We may have everything paved and done and then the only thing that won't be there is the lighting, cause that's on order. Uh, I think the lighting isn't gonna, the three lights that we have over on the Bay Ford side won't be there until, they're not gonna be here till November and then the fencing. But we'll have to make a decision, do we keep it closed from a liability standpoint or people are still gonna walk it without the railing and such, so.
That's another discussion.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Rosepep.
I know this is gonna sound like, uh, kind of, I don't know, I'm not trying to chastise. My question is, what can we do? Is there anything we can do contractually where, you know, we're finding out after the fact a hundred thousand dollars and we're, quite frankly, we're, we're, we're not, we're running on a razor's ed- edge on some of these projects. And it, it sounds like, you know, a person coming in hat in hand afterwards and saying, oh, by the way, I moved all this stuff and you're right, it probably wouldn't made much of a difference, but it doesn't sound like to a certain degree that we're able to keep on top of it when the contractor isn't being a little bit forthwith.
Well, I, I don't think it was the contractor. Um, it was, it was partially the contractor and, cause we hired, we have a CAC, CACM team out there. And my conversations with the owner of that company were, you know, because he's having concerns that he's going to be over budget. And I said, well, we paid you a lot of money to, to manage this site, not tell us two months after the fact that we were over in quantities because you were out there every day collecting tickets and didn't think to update your schedule of values every week. And we meet out there every week. So, and when we met out there in August in the, in the picnic shelter that got moved back, it was, hey, we've got lots of underages in some areas and we got some overages in other areas and those are all going to balance out. So all we're gonna have is this additional fencing and conduits. And then we had a meeting a week later and it was, well, we got some extra tickets we didn't have and we had this and we had that. Next thing you know, we went from thirty thousand to ninety-eight thousand and then to a hundred and six thousand and then, oh, by the way, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. So it's, it's one of those moments where you scratch your head. Um, again, you know, you could go, it's, it's not an errors, that item's not an Arizona emissions item because it's a change in condition. Um, it's more of a, and like I said earlier, the material was there and was gonna have to come out and be replaced anyway. Um, so that would, that's, the city's gonna bear the cost of that one way or the other. It's just that it would have been nice to have known when we bid the project, so that would have been in the exploratory or, you know, but, uh, it was a change in condition. And so, uh, it wasn't a three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar project, it was a four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar project.
I just don't want to use an AED on, on Noah, you know, just.
He's, we've already resuscitated him a few times.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a motion for approval of change order number three to contract number twenty-three dash eighteen with Neptune Marine LLC for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Number Three Construction. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I believe that concludes our, oh, we've got one more business item, business item G. Uh, approval of the August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen council meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Councilmember Chang.
I move that we approve the, uh, August twenty-first council meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One exception.
We do have one exception, okay. Um, okay, we're on to item number eight, reports of council committees. Start with Finance?
Yes, we have a, uh, Finance Committee scheduled for, um, the seventeenth in the morning. Uh, we've got the auditor's exit, uh, conference that is scheduled to take place, um, first thing in the morning, it was at eight forty-five, Noah, and then following that, we have the, the Finance Committee scheduled, so the morning of the seventeenth here, approximately eight forty-five AM.
Okay. Economic Development and Tourism?
Yes, we, um, met yesterday and our primary agenda item was a single-use plastic bag ban. And via Facebook, we had invited any public that wished to come and get information to be there. And we did have a couple of citizens join us, so that was nice. Uh, Chris Piercy, at Councilman Deener's invitation, uh, came, and Chris is the county's recycling coordinator and he came and updated us on the county's progress in their ordinance and answered all of our questions. Um, he's going to investigate, uh, some data for us, basically on the success of other jurisdictions' programs that have instituted the mandatory, uh, paper bag fee and those which have not made that mandatory. What is the six, you know, those various jurisdiction, jurisdiction successes. And he will be back again at our October meeting and we will continue our discussion. Um, we also talked about what it would look like if Port Orchard accelerated, um, our ordinance in front of the county's ordinance. And, you know, what would that look like? Because there's a major educational piece with this and, um, as Councilman Rose Pepe mentioned, we don't want to actually give, um, our Finance Director a heart attack in that for us to do all this education, because that's a piece that the county's willing to do. So there will be some time coordination on this. Anyway, our discussions will continue into October and if any other council members has questions, please get them to us or get them to Chris so he can answer them. Um, we also had a brief discussion of a potential mixed-use project office Cedric, um, and how it would impact our traffic or traffic implications. And this happens to be out of the area where we did our, um, traffic study?
Right.
Okay. And, and anyway, we just had a brief, it was introduced to us and we said, okay, and the mayor's gonna go off and talk to the, the potential developer. The city clerk's office is preparing to update our video that's on our website and so we're all gonna look at it and provide comments to, um, the city clerk and if anyone else has any comments on what they would like to see. I, I don't believe we're redoing it, we're just taking what we've got and reformatting and perhaps have a new script or something like that.
I think, if I may, I think we were trying to target around a minute and a half, is that what we settled on?
Yeah, something, uh, uh, we were trying to update it and condense it. And this was at the suggestion of John Powers, the Executive Director of KETA. He thought we may be able to have something that was a little more effective. Um, and with that, I think.
I, I think just to go back to the plastic bag, we're, we're targeting, trying to bring something to the council, I believe in January?
Correct. I'm not sure that we're going to have our work at a place where we can have some at the October work study and then November work study will be primarily, um, budget. And then I don't, I think that we don't have work study in December, so January is, is our target and we will have our work, our due diligence completed by then.
If I could just add to what you were talking about with the county's role, the county has indicated they are willing to support the public outreach component of this, so A-Board signs, window signs, uh, window clings, I think they call them, and those kinds of things that would help take the burden from our staff, city staff. Uh, and that, I think that's a huge part of the outreach that they're willing to, um, take on and own, so that's great news.
The other thing that, um, Chris Piercy said is that the other jurisdictions aren't moving as quickly as we are. Uh, Bainbridge Island already has an ordinance in place, but Pauls Bow and Bremerton, um, have not, are not as far along or haven't actually deliberated it very much at this point. And so that's one of the drivers too, to the county's timeline. And our question was, do we want to be held back while they, while they complete this entire process? Um, we'll just have to see how it works out.
Chris's point was that we don't want to have differing ordinances so that when you cross the street, literally, you've got a different set of rules and regulations that you've got to play with.
Right.
And then also, there was a, uh, open house at city or at the Commissioner's Chambers a few weeks back and, um, Bremerton did attend and indicated that there was some interest in moving forward.
So that was our meeting and we're going to meet again the second Monday in October. I believe it is a holiday, but the city does, the city is operational that day, so our meeting will continue that day.
Okay. Thank you, Utilities.
There hasn't been a meeting since, um, we last met, but our next meeting is September seventeenth at nine thirty. Will there be a problem with the overlap of these two committee meetings that day?
I mean, I'm just wondering.
Overlap or have a problem?
So it's be you and Jay. I don't think Jay was going over to Finance and then the mayor doesn't usually attend.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Noah, but I appreciate the question because we were just talking about that, discussed that, so we want to make sure to, uh, adhere to the public, um, meeting laws so that we, for the Finance Committee, expect full, three full members, so another council member can join that group without us publicly noticing, uh, that meeting. So I'm glad you asked the question because I got a little bit concerned when we had potentially six council members on site, we'll have two different meetings, so there shouldn't be a problem there.
Sounds good.
Okay, Sewer Advisory.
The next meeting is October tenth, six thirty PM and it will be here at City Hall.
Okay, Land Use, uh, we have not met in a little while, but the next meeting is September twenty-fourth at nine thirty AM at DCD's offices. Uh, Lodging Tax Advisory?
Uh, we have a meeting for September twenty-sixth. We have, uh, eight applications, uh, that we'll be reviewing and, uh, more to follow.
Okay. Festival of Chimes and Lights?
Our next meeting is next week, Monday at three thirty here at City Hall.
And is there any outside agency committee reports for tonight? None? Okay. And the, uh, mayor is out of town, uh, so there's no report from the mayor. Department heads, Mr. Dorsey?
I've used all of my minutes plus more.
All right.
I have nothing to further add and I just, again, wanted to confirm with the Finance Committee for the seventeenth, so we've done that for the SAO exit entrance and then we'll continue right into the Finance Committee at nine o'clock till ten o'clock on the seventeenth, so thank you.
Gates?
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Ms. Ryan Anderson?
Yes, I have two items.
Okay.
So, um, the mayor wanted me to share with you that he does have an updated report from code enforcement on the dangerous and derelict buildings. If you are interested, I'd be happy to share it with you. Or he can give you a more formal update or presentation at the next council meeting. So there's that. And then lastly, he, and along with the committee, has asked us to provide his survey to Port Orchard businesses and Port Orchard residents. So we've had that on the website and I think we received about 100 responses so far. So we're tallying them up and deciding, you know, or putting them into whose county residence, Port Orchard residence, and then hopefully bring that back to the committee in October for further discussion. So if you haven't already taken that survey, it is on the, the website for you and the public to do so.
Are we able to get a glimpse of the trending on that?
I know that of the 147 of them were reviewed and of those 47 votes, 22 of them, and Janine can correct me if I'm wrong, 22 of them lived in the city or had a business in the city. The other ones had Bremerton addresses or outside of the area addresses.
For or against?
Oh, I don't know if she, let me see. Let me find out.
It's a very complicated survey. Yes or no?
It's pretty, it's pretty close, 50/50.
Okay.
Based on what she's reviewed so far.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are, we are at our second citizens' comments period for tonight. Anybody who'd like to come and speak, please limit your comments to three minutes for any items that were not up for public hearing. And please state your name for the record.
Steve Ladd. I have a question. What is the derivation of these question marks? What do those things mean? Are you proposing to take action on them or something?
Well, the questions that are on the whiteboard, those were questions that were raised during a work study retreat with the council.
Okay.
Anybody else like to give any, okay.
I have a curiosity. We're obviously being filmed today and normal, I was just curious who, who you all were and what was the filming?
Love for Liberty, publications.
Yeah, just curiosity, that's all. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
First Amendment audit. Amendment of the US opposition.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Oh, any good of the order items?
I have one item. You'll be hearing probably more from Brandy, but we're having a mental health first aid training here at City Hall on Saturday, November 3rd. And you'll probably be getting a flyer by email. It's, it's an eight-hour-long course put out by Kids at Mental Health. And it's open to the public and staff and council members. Limited, but open to anyone.
Okay, any other good of the order?